Joining you.
I'm going to gather. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, please. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. This is a workshop. We will not have a invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With your indulges, I'm going to read the ethics statement. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state at this time. Not seeing any, obviously, if something arises, please let us know. Alderman Lo Davis is on the line with us and Alderman Spencer is absent. I wanted to start off by saying, why are we here? Bob Jarvis is going to give you the technical part of that. And that is Alderman Masdeller was kind enough to give me a call, I don't know, a week ago, something like that, in which she had recognized that there was a public comment period for comma and for DEQ to address the issue of the dredging out here. The city had already sent in their comments to the Corps of Army Engineers. It's a very technical document. It's available for anybody to read. But since there's another comment period for people within the state of North Carolina that we might be able to influence, we wanted to be able to bring everybody up to speed at the same time. So I thank Alderman Masdeller for bringing this to our attention. And with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda. There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. So, Mr. Jarvis, if you would be so kind as to set the stage for us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Good morning. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as the mayor indicated, is proposing navigational improvements to the Wilmington Harbor Federal Navigation Channel that leads from the Atlantic Ocean to the port of Wilmington. The proposed improvements include deepening the channel from its current depth of about 44 feet to the vicinity of 47 to 50 feet deep. The channel will also be widened to as much as 500 feet in some places. The project originates approximately 16 miles offshore and extends about 38 miles through the Atlantic Ocean up the Cape Fear River to the city of Wilmington, where it services the port of Wilmington. The improvements are intended to better accommodate the forecasted future cargo vessel fleet that will move through the channel. As a part of the project and in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, the Army Corps of Engineers has prepared a draft environmental impact statement. The draft EIS presents the results of investigations and analyses that evaluated the engineering, economic, and environmental impacts related to the navigation system improvements. Staff recognize that the project has the potential to impact the shoreline of the Cape Fear River and could impact the private properties as well as city infrastructure, like roadways, utilities, sidewalks, et cetera. Since the city is poised to spend millions to maintain the integrity of its shoreline and protect its infrastructure, we retained the services of TI Coastal Services to help us weed through the EIS and critique the design as it relates to the direct impacts to Southport's coastline assets. TI Coastal is working with Southport on other coastal projects and they have specific knowledge of the Cape Fear River and the federal navigation channel in that area. As a part of the EIS process, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Qualities, Division of Coastal Management, is currently accepting comments about the project, as the mayor indicated. TI Coastal submitted comments on behalf of the city during the Army Corps of Engineers' public review period. And those comments pertain to channel alignment, wave action, and storm surges, ship frequency, as well as the potential for shoaling adjacent to the project area. And it's our intent to submit similar comments to the DEQ during the comment period that's currently ongoing. And I believe it expires December 20th. With me today is Jamie Pratt from TI Coastal Service. If you have any questions about the EIS or our response to date. With that, I will answer questions if you have some.
Has anybody in the board had any questions for Mr. Jarvis?
I do. You mentioned how it would affect potentially sidewalks. Is that along the riverline? Because I had actually heard that a deeper, wider channel could impact more inland as well.
Yes, I was referring to those infrastructure assets that we have already seen, the potential for subsidence, some of those areas along Bay Street where we had to put the emergency repairs in last year where erosion was actually undermining areas of the sidewalk.
You'll get.
Hello?
Lo, could you turn your, put yourself on mute?
Okay.
So those were the assets that I was speaking of in particular, those that are in close proximity to the shoreline. But certainly, there is potential, I guess, for further inland. But I was particularly referring to those right at the shoreline. You're welcome.
Bob, I can see how this would help Wilmington make it a larger port and whatnot. Bottom line, what good would it do for Southport? Doesn't create a headache for us.
I think that, as you put it so aptly, it does benefit the port of Wilmington. There are regional impacts that would be more or less economical on the economic side of it. But as far as a direct benefit to Southport, I don't see anything other than the potential for negative impacts.
I could see a big, shall we say, a bill coming to us to repair our waterfront and whatnot based on that worst-case scenario, but I don't see anything positive that could happen to us.
That is very well put, yes.
I just want to clarify too. It's my understanding that the dredging would come 400, as much as 400 feet closer to us, the channel.
Yeah, I think that.
So I think that's really key to this conversation.
Yeah, I think the potential exists for that to be 400 feet closer to the shoreline and then the sloping would further exacerbate that, yes.
Any other questions?
I don't think he can answer my question. It's more about, and I don't mean that in an insult, but has the conversation about the route been locked in that they're going to stick with this channel route rather than go behind Battery Island or Corn Cut? Or are those just completely shut down, no opportunity to look at that? And we pass that stage?
I will let Mr. Pratt speak to that. But we have explored alternative routes. And that was a part of our initial comment to the Army Corps of Engineers that we asked them, we proposed a route that would have less impact to the city of Southport. But I'll let Jamie.
Yeah, that's something that we kind of looked at and suggested that they investigate. Part of the draft environmental impact statement is nothing is locked in for sure yet. They have public comment period where they take comments from everybody and take those into consideration before publishing the FEIS, the final environmental impact statement. So we've proposed alternative routes that may lessen impacts to society of Southport as well as, I think, Battery Island as well. So that's something that hopefully they will consider and investigate as part of their alternative analysis. Currently in the DEIS, that is not part of their alternative analysis, is looking at a cut-through channel that goes behind or on the east side of Battery Island. But it's something for them to maybe consider that it reduces the overall length of shoreline as well as, I think, overall wave impacts because it straightens the ship channel out.
So it's not just the ships. If that channel was open, we would have a barrier. And even the Bald Head Ferry, which goes back and forth every 30 minutes, which causes more problem than any ship. It would give us a barrier. And for Southport, that would be our best route. We would lose a little bit of the visibility of the boat, the ships, but long-term. And the route is a direct route, which I know a few river pilots, you know, there's a turn there. And it would be easier to go straight, so.
It would be. I think that turn around Battery Island. It would be, I think that turn around Battery Island between Southport, I think it's Southport and Lower Swash Reach in the channel is very difficult for that size ship to make, and I think it'd just be much easier to go straight through.
Yes, sir, thank you. Have we identified that aspect? Maybe I missed it in the report. But if you're saying that it would make it easier for the pilots and the ships, twelve hundred feet they're currently coming in, to, to go on the other side of Battery Island, is that, you're saying it's easier if they, if they were, in fact, were to cut that channel?
I believe so, yeah, it's a straight shot, so instead of going around a bend, it would be a much more direct navigational route.
Bob, is there a way to, before we actually send anything in, to have a phone call that, I don't know if the pilots want to get involved in this or not. It may be too political for them, but to confirm that that's part of, part of the.
We can certainly do that, absolutely. Oh, and it just, I think you were going to this, but we did include this alternative alignment.
Right, I saw that in your talk, yes.
So we, we, we might be able to get in touch with the Pilots Association.
So Mark, in the, in the document, there's a discussion about taking on the other side of Battery Island. It cuts a mile off the route, but it is, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Bob. But it potentially would add more soil that would have to be moved because, as you know, if you go on the other side of Battery Island, you're going to run aground at low tide, having done that several times. We all can do that, yes. So while it is shorter and potentially an easier turn, it would be more soil, most likely would be more soil that would be removed. But you have to weigh that versus all the other positive benefits that you would get for it. I just want to make sure that we're clear about those discussions. Karen, did you have something you want to say?
Well, mine was more about mitigation and the lack thereof in their proposal. The way I've read their document, it only really references wetlands and fish passage mitigation, which is further up from us that they're talking about, as well as conceptual blast mitigation during the construction phase. So, and I know, I just want to say this from an engineering standpoint. The Savannah project that they completed dredging to, from forty-two to forty-seven, which is essentially our project, cost them a billion dollars and it was completed in twenty-twenty-two and half of that, over five hundred million, was spent on mitigation. So at which point do these reports include numbers of how much they're willing to commit to mitigation? Do you have any experience with that?
I believe there is some economic analysis for mitigation measures in the appendices of the document. There are several, it's not substantial amount, but bird reclamation for island habitat along the eastern side of the shipping channel. There's some Battery Island rehabilitation of habitat inside of this, and then also some bird islands that are further up along the channel itself. But it's not a substantial amount that would, it's not equivalent, in my opinion, to the amount of habitat loss that's being taken.
And you're referring not to our document, but to the Corps' document?
Correct.
Okay.
And so that we don't have ongoing mitigation beyond, the Savannah project is committed to ongoing mitigation beyond the completion of the project. I did not see any references to that.
I don't remember seeing that either, but I don't, I can't say whether it is or not in that document, honestly.
The reason I say that is just as an example, I'm, I'm really saying this so we can get some of this information out. Just as an example, they just posted in Savannah on their website for this project and the ongoing mitigation, a bird study about the blood, what's the contents cadmium in blood in the spoil that they've located inland. So that this, and this is the eleventh year of that study. So this, this, this kind of commitment to understanding the environmental impacts is absent in this document.
There's a, I love this word because none of us understood the word. Subsidence?
Subsidence.
That's the word, yes. For the rest of us, that means the, the, where they have the fifty-some-odd-foot trench for the channel, the soil on both sides may slide into that. Am I correct? Is that what that, what that word means?
Yeah, it's a general lowering of the ground elevation relative to like a water to a datum. So just instead of sea level rising, the whole ground sinks. A lot of times you get it around de-watering procedures or where oil is being pumped out of the ground. It just lowers the overall ground elevation.
So part of this discussion that we've had in meetings and stuff is talked about. We spent five million dollars for Southport and then there's a private sector part of it that will be discussed later on. And we put all that in and then it slides into the hole. If, if it slides into the hole, as Karen pointed out, there's no money or identified money to fix that. Realistically, if we're moving the channel four hundred feet this way, is there any way in the engineering world to try to understand the potential risk of that happening to our shoreline?
So I looked at that a little bit over the past week. Even though in the closest part of the new channel alignment that they're proposing is their preferred alternative inside the EIS statement, draft EIS statement, the channel shifts about three hundred and eighty-four feet closer to the city dock. That's the bottom of the toe, so bottom of the slope is dredged at a flat elevation across at elevation fifty or so into, if it's rock. And then on the sides of that, it's a three-to-one side slope coming up in the vicinity of Southport. Further offshore, it's a five-to-one side slope, so every foot vertical you come up, it would be five feet out. Around you guys, it would be three feet out for every foot vertical you come up. So if you were to come up to elevation zero, which the river right now is not at zero, at most that top of the slope would be another hundred and fifty feet closer. Using those offsets of three hundred and eighty-four plus another hundred and fifty feet to the top of the slope, which would be natural, you are still about five hundred feet off of the end of the city pier, the fishing pier that's out into the river. So there's always the potential for sloughing of the, the bank to come in. The likelihood, in my opinion, of that occurring with that, that much of a buffer is fairly small, I think. I think your bigger impacts are going to come from wake-induced erosion, as Bob referred to, along the shoreline where you have larger ships, larger wakes, those wakes are pushing up against the shoreline and eroding that at a faster rate than what you currently have. But overall, you know, the whole digging, digging a hole in a whole side, sloughing in, the, the point of the side slopes is to prevent, is to basically mimic what the natural material would want to fall at, at an angle coming down into the, the hole itself. So it kind of free forms that hole.
So Southport is not the first rodeo for the Corps of Army Engineers. So have we had prob, have they had problems in other areas? I'm assuming all of this is based on the type of soil that's in the water.
Correct.
So if you have more clay base, they would probably be sturdier.
Yeah, be more vertical.
And so based on the soil that we have, your best guess, and I don't mean that derogatory, your best guess is that there's little, there's a low risk of it sliding into that.
Correct.
But again, whether it's, whether it's a low risk doesn't mean there's no risk. So I want to go back to what Alderman Mosteller was pointing out is that if something like that were to happen or the waves wash something away, there's virtually no money to fix any of that, which is, we're not inventing the wheel here because they've already done it in Savannah and they just haven't attached it to this document. Am I, am I correct on that?
Yeah, as, as Jamie indicated, there, there.
There's little, there's some money for some bird islands further up, but.
Right, but they, they don't go into the detail that they did in the, in the, or the magnitude as they do in the Savannah instance.
And Bald Head did have an instance where the realignment of the shipping channel further to the east did cause severe erosion to their beaches and they had a, had to go through a lawsuit, but the Corps did fund multiple projects for Bald Head Island to redo their beach.
Would, would our proposal of going on the other side of Battery Island negatively impact Bald Head Island?
No, because this, the channel shift is past Bald Head and Caswell reaches. So you come in, in the, it's basically a straight shot from the entrance channel and continues up to about where Matsu is.
Since I'm going to see the mayor of Caswell Beach tomorrow, my question, it's a little bit off from Southport, but as you come, as you come out or in, as you get past that light way out there that you can see, and you get around the corner, there's a sandbar there that low tide is out of the water, just below, before low tide is where the sailboats come to abrupt stop. Is that part of, would that somewhat disappear from the new channel? Are you, are you familiar with that or not?
Not that exact position of that sandbar in relation to where we proposed. And the, this was a channel alignment that we investigated a little bit back in two thousand and eight with the Inter-Tech International Terminal that was.
Noport Southport?
Noport Southport project. So we did do a little bit of preliminary geotechnical work in there, in that cut-through channel and it was primarily sandy material. I think the volume of sand to be removed was enough to nourish both, all of the Brunswick County beaches. Our proposal for potentially looking at that would be using some of that sand for beach nourishment, but then also for closing up the current channel alignment that is here and creating a little bit more island or upland estuary habitat, as well as bolstering Battery Island and building out some more sand around that island to preserve the white ivy population roosting habitat that they have there. And look at maintaining a shallow navigation channel around where the current deep water channel is, but creating estuary habitat and, and saltwater, salt marsh habitat around Southport and just realigning the channel straight through behind.
And the reason why I ask these questions because it's always better to have as many jurisdictions as possible that wants to play in the same game to help that political aspect of it. So my concern about that sandbar out there is if it was to disappear or significantly disappear, I don't know if the Baptist would slide off or wash away or, because that acts as a barrier to, to that point right out there. And so I, I, I don't, I didn't see anything in the Corps' documents that even, even vaguely talked about that. But I, I also didn't see that they talked much about that sandbar, so.
Yeah.
It's just another point of contention.
And ours, and our proposal is an alternative to investigate, is very preliminary, is very, you know, back of a napkin kind of sketch. And there are positives and negatives to going that route, so it's just something for them to consider. It was not included as part of the original discussion, so that was.
Well, once again, my, my point is to get, make sure Caswell understands that there, that that is a potential risk for them and that they might want to get something in by the twentieth of December as well. Any other questions for this gentleman?
Worst-case scenario, if you had a lot of subsidence and whatnot, we could have to dredge out there forever. Worst, worst-case scenario, I mean, they, depending, again, depending on how much subsidence have, amount of storms and whatnot, you could, you just will put somebody on, on, out there forever.
Yeah, the shoaling rates potentially could be a little bit higher around the bend because you have water that, as it comes around and kind of settles out, you would drop sediment out. So there's, they did some shoaling analysis and it shows slightly higher shoaling in some areas. But I think it would be in tune with what the, the current maintenance cycle of most projects are of a three-to-four-year return period to hit a hotspot shoaling places.
And then I'm just looking at the map, so the alternative route that you're proposing is between Battery and Striking, is that? I'm, I'm just trying to picture where the, you're there?
That's the, that's the Corps' proposed alignment. I, I don't think we have a graphic for the alignment that, that we have.
Yeah, yep. So Battery Island is the island, it's right here. So the proposal that we have is basically where the entrance channel comes in, we'll be going somewhere straight up and connecting up. So you bypass this entire drug handle turn.
Thank you. So based on this map, it would be between Battery and Striking?
I think an interesting point of that, that turn there, if you spent any time in those chairs out there watching the boats go by, when the wind is coming out of the south, it predominantly does come out of the south and it's a twelve-hundred-foot or eleven-hundred-foot freighter comes in, if the wind is high enough, they have to bring tugboats down to drag the tail end around to do that. It would appear to me, which is always an issue that, while it probably is going to run aground before it actually hits our, our land here, we know that they had one lose propulsion a couple of years ago and they had to ground it on that side of the, of the, of the, that Berry Island over there. So this not only might take a mile off of the turn, might not, might make it actually easier to make the turn, but the other part of it is, I think it would be less risk on the windy days when they're trying to bring those, those big ships in with the freeboard being, acting as a sail to go on that side. That's, that's a non-engineer making that statement. Would, would, does that, does that statement make sense?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Anytime you can drive a boat in a straight line versus trying to go around a, a big turn, it'd be easier for the captains.
Any other questions?
The devil in the details is that is extremely expensive is what the ultimate, is money.
Yeah, it's, it's, but you look at also where the rock layer is, so dredging rock is multiple times more expensive than digging sand is. So part of our initial geotech probing that we did was looking for the top of rock and I believe in that cut-through area was all down below minus fifty, so you wouldn't potentially not be digging rock. It would be all sediment versus blasting and dredging rock, which is an extremely expensive endeavor. So again, this is very preliminary, we did very rudimentary, you know, jet probes to try to find the top of rock and it looked good, but the, the Noport Southport project did not advance any further than that. And so we didn't, it, more investigations would have to be done to investigate the cost-benefit analysis, the environmental impacts. It's just a suggestion for them to, to consider.
Is your work on that other project so preliminary that it would not be wise to put that concept into the, the document that we're writing?
No, I think it needs to be proposed and I referenced the.
I mean, I know we got the proposal to do that channel, but I, maybe I missed it. I don't recall that, that discussion that the, the rock is below the fifty-foot mark and as such it may be cheaper. Is it in our document?
I think, well, the cost-benefit, the Corps would know that it's cheaper to dig sand than it is to dig rock. But the, the depth of rock, I think I referenced the geotechnical report that is at the Port of Wilmington currently at their engineering department, for them to, to reference.
Yeah, but that means you have to go look it up.
Yes.
And one thing about government contractors, contracts, if I gotta go look it up, I'm not looking it up. So maybe we could, I, I don't want to put words in it that are not accurate, but if, if there's a way to put a small paragraph in there that.
Into our comments that, that spouts upon the.
Yeah.
Depth of rock in this investigation.
I understand what you, why you did what you did, but I just.
Yeah, we can do that.
I've worked with the Corps before.
Okay, I've got a.
Go ahead.
Last question and I'm, I grew up hearing stories about people swimming across to Battery Island. And as it got deeper and deeper, the current has become, so the deeper you go, the more current and more flow of water you have through that area. Changing the, the route would, would also affect our current because the flow of the river could go straight out easier than come and turn this corner. And it would change the dynamic. If we move that channel, it would sort of, sediment would collect in these channels more and it wouldn't affect the yachts, it wouldn't affect the sailboats, but the ships couldn't use it anymore. So the change in that hydrology or whatever, seems like the deeper we get, the stronger. seems like the deeper we get, the stronger the current.
And the straighter channel has more, it's easier for water to travel through, so your velocity stays up. When you get into a meandering stream, it becomes much slower versus a straight stream.
Erosion underneath the water as well, because these things are drawing water when they come through and it has to have effect on those shoulders. Thank you. Appreciate you.
No problem.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I believe that Alderman Lay asked this question. I didn't fully understand the answer. In the Savannah project, has that resulted in absolutely constant dredging? And what do they do with the dredging spoils? Has the spoils from the dredging of this been discussed at all?
As it relates to the Savannah project, I don't, I don't think we have the intimate knowledge of that project to, to comment on that. If that's your question.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We may have to call you back up for another, another round, but for the time being. Jan, if you would be so kind, if the button is not already pushed for the red, a little red light, if you would hit that, please.
All right, thank you. My name's Jan LaFrancois. I've been a resident of here full time since, well, over 10 years. But I have been coming to this area since the 1960s. So I've seen a lot of change that has happened. My parents chose this as a place to bring our family year after year. I was drawn here because of the natural environment that exists here, small town, everything that I wanted. And I promised myself as a little old lady that I would live here, and I'm here now. I volunteer with the Audubon Society, and I also volunteer for Sea Biscuit, Biscuit for Bird Rescue. I've been fortunate enough with Audubon to be out to Battery Island and some of the other islands out here. I've fished out here, spent a lot of time. I listened to the proposals, just to let you know, kind of spinning down this rabbit hole of this alternative that could maybe, probably, you know, luckily exists for us. And I don't see this as a solution to what we have going on right now with the habitat loss right out our window here. We see dredgers working. I've worked at the Southport Marina for four and a half years. And when those dredge boats come in, nobody wants to be near them. They're stinky. They have oil on them. They're just not pleasant to be. And they've been parked out here for weeks now. They'll probably be here all winter, and it's going to have a huge effect on Battery Island. It's gonna have an effect on everything around here that is for fishermen and people who come here and they just want to sit in these chairs. And they want to watch the ibis go back and forth. And we're going to be locked in to looking at something that we're trying to create the solution for additional commerce. And the bottom line is, these bigger boats aren't going to serve us. Really, the, the economic gain that Wilmington will get out of this is minimal compared to the gains that are in other cities and other ports when they do this type of project. I see more loss than gain. I see none of this, any channel change as being a solution to what we have right now. I would like to introduce some of the people who are more familiar and spend more time out here in these areas. Because I think going behind Battery Island, which is, with the fishermen called Behind Bald Head, that area, it, it's just going to have a large impact on our pelican populations, tern populations, the ibis, all of this is just going to deteriorate away. And these are the things that drew me here and have drawn many of us here and our visitors. And our economic impact is going to be affected by anything that goes on out here. So I was part of Noport Southport, and I'm kind of fired up about, you know, thinking about this as that same type of thing that happened. So anyway, I just to soon turn it over to Lindsay Addison, who is here, who is a coastal biologist for Audubon and Carrie, who is with Coastal Management. So if nobody has any questions for me, I'll let them speak to what they see happening.
Just for the record, I want to make sure that we understand both of those individuals you just mentioned are on this agenda. So we're not just taking public comment that way. I just want to make sure we point that out, okay? No, I understand that, ma'am. So Lindsay, you're up next, ma'am.
Hey, thanks for having me. I'm Lindsay Addison. I work for Audubon, North Carolina. A little bit about me first. I've lived in Wilmington for just almost within a month, 15 years. And Audubon, North Carolina is the state office of the National Audubon Society. We have about 14 staff people statewide from the mountains to the coast. I'm obviously the coastal contingent. And I work for our coast program and we manage waterbirds on the coast of North Carolina from Okocoke Inlet on south. So we interact with habitat management, on the ground, science monitoring, research, and also, you know, comment on projects proposed through the, the regulatory and public comment process. Specifically speaking about the Cape Fear River. A lot of people know Battery Island, and especially if you live in Southport, you can't help but know Battery Island. A lot of people also boat and fish around here, so you probably know that Battery Island is not the only island. There are multiple islands on the Cape Fear River, as well as an extensive marsh system. Those islands on the river are owned by the state. They're owned by different divisions within the state. So depending on which division has control of which island, we manage all of them either through leases. We lease Battery and Striking Island from the Administrative Department of the State. And we have a cooperative management agreement with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, which owns the other islands on the river. All told, there are about 10 bird nesting sites on the river. And together, those sites support about 30% of the nesting coastal waterbirds in North Carolina. So 30% out of the entire coast of North Carolina is here on the Lower Cape Fear River. So when I say lower, people have different definitions. I mean, the nosegut and south. So it's an incredibly important area for nesting birds. And I do work in the office, I do work on the computer. I also do work in the field, which is one of the best parts of my job. A lot of my time in the field is actually on the Cape Fear River. So in the spring, in the summer, I'm usually on the river two, three days a week. I'm on the river at least once a month in the other months out of the year. And that's in a small skiff, a 23, 21 foot skiff. So I know the river very well, just personally, from direct experience, as well as professionally through my work with Audubon. I also, you know, because we interact with the regulatory process, Audubon does comment on, on different proposed coastal projects through the NEPA review process. So I was the lucky person on our staff who read the DEIS. I also read, or skim, depending on whether it was particularly relevant to, to our areas of interest, the, the appendices. So that's hundreds of pages. They're not really documents that are intended to be read. I don't really think it's a literary form that, you know, has a lot of promise. It's, but, but I'm just, so I'm familiar with these documents. And I would like to address the specific impacts that the project as proposed would have on the bird islands. And I don't only mean, you know, Battery Island or Bird Island, but, you know, all 10 of the islands. So, so multiple, and indeed, some of these are the same impacts that you would see on all of the shorelines of the 25 miles from here up to the port of Wilmington. And, 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 you know, number one, the, the drafted environmental impact statement or DEIS, you know, proposes to deepen the river. And as part of this process, which this initially got kicked off in 2019, when, when the state port issued a scoping notice of their intent to pursue this project. I've been to stakeholder meetings, I've been to workshops. So one of the really interesting things that I learned at these workshops is from the Corps, this is, if they do this project, there is no deeper project that they could pursue just because of the physical width of the river. They cannot make a slope on the sides of the channel, as you guys were talking about. It's not going to be any, they can't make it any wider. So the, the Corps' own engineers said that. So this would be the deepest it could go. Savannah already wants to go deeper. They just deepen and widen. They want to do another deepening and widening process. So, so Wilmington is never really going to be comparable to these, these other ports, to Norfolk or Charleston or Savannah. It's just physically constrained. So, you know, you want to be what you are and not what someone else is. And I think they've done a great job of being efficient and, and sort of making the port attractive in other ways economically for, for shipping traffic. But, but we're never going to compete with these true deep water ports because the geography, the geology isn't there. So for this, proposing to deepen the channel would bring not any bigger ships, but it would bring heavier ships, because the largest ships that exist now already come up the river. You guys know it. You see it in the local press. Everybody comes out. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty spectacular sight. But because they would be heavier, they would displace more water and they would throw more wake. So even a bird biologist understands, you know, in less detail than the engineers, but you get more wake. And so you get basically the tsunami that you guys are probably familiar with. You could see all the water get sucked out and all the water get thrown back. The DIS incorrectly assumes that it will not create any more erosion along the shorelines. That's what the DIS 25 years ago said when they did the previous deepening and widening. So they've incorrectly gauged the impact before, and they're doing it again. So you would get more erosion along all of the shorelines of the Cape Fear River, including the bird nesting islands. And some of that is just the physical, you know, impact of the waves hitting the shoreline, destabilizing vegetation, suspending sediment, and taking chunks of peat off of the marsh. And those waves, those wakes, they propagate all the way over to the east side of the river, all the way to what's called Shellbed Island or Behind Battery Island. Depends on the tide, depends on the direction of the, the boat and the current. But I've sat and watched. I've, you have to take your boat off of the shoreline. You could have your boat beached up above the high, high tide line if you're not careful. If you're anchored on one of these islands, if you're anchored on Striking Island. So, so you have increased erosion along, you know, a lot of the shoreline. You also have, because there's run up, so the waves hit the shoreline and then they, they run up the shore above the high, high tide line. So into the dry areas of the marsh or of the sandy islands. And that washes out bird nests. And that happens now, and it will happen more with heavier ships carrying more cargo. And that's, that's what this is designed to do, is to allow ships to come in carrying more cargo. The DEIS's economic forecast says they're not going to bring any more tonnage. It's going to be the same amount of cargo, but it's going to be on fewer heavier ships. And those ships are going to be therefore more destructive with each passage. And of course, they forecast fewer ships, but there's no point where you say, oh, we said 100 ships would come. There'd be 100, you know, calls at port and you can't have 101. Of course, you can have 101. So they're just, it's just a guess. And if they exceed their guess, they'll exceed the impacts in the, in the statement. So our concern is, is to the bird habitat, to the erosion on the, the bird islands and, and the direct loss of eggs and chicks. The mitigation plan proposes no work for birds whatsoever. There is a beneficial use plan. If you go to the Corps', you know, list of appendices, you can see that there's a section for mitigation that covers the fish passage in the wetlands. But then there's another section called beneficial use, and that covers what they would do with the 37 million or so cubic yards of material that would have to be taken out of the river in order to accommodate a deeper channel. There is no new work for bird islands, no habitat improvements for bird islands proposed in that project. The Corps already places dredge material from the applicable reaches of the river channel onto sandy dredge islands. We hold the permit. We apply for the permit with the Wildlife Resources Commission. In order to get those Corps' projects on the two islands, they're called Ferry Slip and South Pelican. So this project calls for no habitat improvements for birds. It calls for no new habitat created for birds, and it calls for no mitigation for impacts to birds. None. None. So the people that want to sit out and watch ibis, the people that want to watch the pelicans, that want to watch all these other species of birds that kind of make this place special to people, those birds habitats are not helped. They're negatively impacted, and this does nothing for them. The, you know, it would be great if there was a better route available. Concerns that we would have for pursuing an alternate route would be that it moves the channel to a different area where it could impact whole new islands. You could see Striking Island is right adjacent to the channel. And you could see that Shellbed Island and the marshes on what I collectively call Smith Island. But basically the shoreline, when you go up from kind of the west beach of Bald Head, all of those, those marshes that are along the east side of the river, all of those would have, you know, the wakes would be that much closer. From a standpoint of the fisheries, the, the state fisheries and the federal fisheries, so national marine fisheries and Division of Marine Fisheries, that would be looking at, you know, loss of what they would consider a central fish habitat. I think there'd be a lot of environmental concerns that, that, you know, I, I would just be prepared to understand that, that would exist. So there's a lot of wetland impacts that I think moving that channel would create. I mean, we already have negative impacts with the channel where it is, and I don't want to minimize those because as managers of Battery Island, we're basically your sisters, you know, in dealing with this problem. Because the wakes go out from the boat, they hit Southport on the one side, they hit Battery Island on the other side. So we're both kind of left with an unfortunate situation that is damaging to the resources that we care about. You know, your town and your community and our island and our birds and our habitat. So I, I think that, that, that comes with a lot of caveats and a lot of new questions. And, and so whether that's, that's even feasible or not, you know, well, that would be something the Corps would examine. But I would just understand that you're looking at significant impacts to wetlands and bird habitat, as well as fish habitat, because that is basically a big shallow area. I can't get my skiff through there at low tide. It's fine at high tide. You can go anywhere you want at high tide, but low tide, mm-mm. So another thing that the, the environmental impact statement does not include is there is no monitoring. Zero, no dollars for monitoring. And people just don't do monitoring for free. You know, people like me, we might be mission motivated. The scientists at UNCW might be really excited about subjects that they study, but nobody can work for free because we all have to buy eggs. And you gotta work a lot to get eggs. So there is a massive gap in this DEIS, which is understanding the impacts of this project. There's no funding for it. And if there's no funding for it, it isn't going to happen. You gotta pay for it. You get what you pay for. If you put $0 in a budget line, you're getting nothing. And, you know, we've called that out, and I think that the, the letter, I think a lot of the issues that were identified by the, the letter that you guys have already sent, you know, are very true and very, very accurate. And, and the lack of monitoring is extremely concerning. And, you know, it's, it's helpful to hear no evil, see no evil, because then you don't have to talk about it or address it through mitigation, which again, is also non-existent, except for wetlands, which the wetland mitigation proposed in the plan is inadequate. And the fish passage that they propose is not what fish experts would recommend as far as dealing with the lock and dam situation. So, so Carrie is going to speak to some of these other broader issues. I kind of wanted to stay focused on birds, what I know about. I will also mention one of the things that, you know, we have been dealing with at our sites for years is of course the loss of, of habitat erosion or, you know, destruction of shoreline, loss of shoreline, including marsh shoreline. And we're kind of looking for creative solutions, new things to try to address some of these issues. One of the things that, that we are working on, on raising funds to do is install a test living shoreline on Shellbed Island and on Battery Island. These would be small test projects that we can easily permit with either a modification of an existing permit that we can hold or through the state's general living shoreline permit program. And basically what we want to do is see if we can find sort of smaller scale, less expensive, more naturalistic solutions to some of these issues. And I've talked to Karen about this. If folks are interested in supporting that, these are relatively small dollar projects. If folks are interested in supporting that, these are relatively small dollar projects. So if that's something folks are interested in, you know, hit me up or ask Karen to hit me up for you. But if we if we have any results or any information from these these projects that would be beneficial to the town, we'd be very happy to share because again, the challenges we face on the Battery Island shoreline are the challenges you guys face on the the South Port shoreline. And I feel that that's, you know, we are really in the same boat, affected by the same boat. But also spiritually in the same boat, metaphorically in the same boat as far as as the challenges we face. So if you have any questions, like I said, I did read the D I S. Anybody wants to know anything about it from my perspective? It would make me feel like I wasted fewer hours of my life, so thanks very much.
Before you before you sit down, any questions from the board?
I I do have one question. I know that, and if I'm correct, when pollutants are sequestered in the bottom of the river now. So when they dredge down another five feet, let's just use that as a round number, then that is going to unsequester a lot of pollutants. So is there any concern about that and the effects of that? I think that's why they're monitoring, part of the monitoring that's going on in Savannah is is dealing with those issues and that sort of thing. So I'm curious, have, do you have a perspective about that as part of the issue?
We did a project with a U N C W graduate student. She now has her PhD and is hopefully still employed by the EPA. And what this project looked at was mercury contamination in shellfish and in sediments around the shellfish beds. One of our sites was on the backside of Battery Island. Another was back up one in the creeks as you go towards Buzzard Bay. So another was on striking, another was on shell bed, so kind of around this part of the river. And we we didn't have a dredging project, but we had Hurricane Florence. And following Hurricane Florence, which created a lot of turbidity and suspended a lot of sediment, we saw a spike in the mercury levels in the sediments and in the shellfish samples that we collected. And those numbers, values went down in the sampling periods as you got further away from Hurricane Florence. We sampled, we were, we were down here when it still smelled really bad. Like we're here maybe about a week after. It was, it was pretty crazy. It just, that was when we were planning on doing our first sampling event and it just so happened. So so that experience leads me to believe that, you know, if you go and stir up a bunch of stuff that's, you know, but by other means than a hurricane, then you very likely could get contaminants, including mercury. And we were not looking at PFAS in our, in that project. But I would, I would think that that would be a a big concern and something that should be monitored to understand what is was happening. Because, you know, as much as we might not like to think about it on a day to day basis, but we're part of the environment. So if the air is dirty and we breathe the air, if the water is dirty and we drink the water, that's a big challenge. So I would expect there to be an uptick in contaminants, including what we know is in the river, Mer- River already mercury, arsenic, selenium, hundreds and hundreds of different types of PFAS. And and that's, and that's, the 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 D I S does not address that basically at all. They dismiss it with a sentence because right now PFAS is not a federally regulated substance. It eventually will be, but but there's kind of a a time horizon in which that's going to happen. But they say they don't have to do it now. And they don't mention the the kind of the traditional contaminants to speak of in the in the document.
I believe my next statement probably will be a difference of opinion between Ole Miss, myself, but that's okay. I'm of the belief that the project's going to be done. One side or the other is going to be done. As I mean, I'm happy with that, just that I think that's what the the ball is already, is going down the court. So with that, with that said, if I understood what you're you're saying is you would prefer to have it stay in the, can we throw that dark graphic up here? You would prefer to have the channel stay where it is proposed now?
At first glance, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, this is, as they say, preliminary, you know, but but yes, looking at it, no, I would not move the channel.
Then the next thing is, I think we're both all in agreement that the mitigation monies for and monitoring monies are things that we're missing from the from the document. The part about the mercury and the other, I'm not smart enough to know about that, except that those dredges out here for the past 10 years that I know of, so the past 20 years that I know of. And that issue has not been brought up a lot. Because if it was really out there, I would hope, though I have not a lot of faith in government, I would hope, because while there is a ban on taking any fish out of here, we know that they're taking fish right off this pier over here, up here over there and eating it. And you're not supposed to do that. And you can watch the shrimpers go up the river and catch their daily supply of shrimp and then sell it to you, even though it's banned from doing that because nobody enforces any of that. However, they've been dredging here forever. Is there, every time they dredge, are we churning up mercury? I mean, is that a, is that a chemical that's here that's so prevalent? I mean, I understand there's arsenic on this side, on the dirt side of it. But I'm just trying to, if I'm going to carry the banner forward on your, what you're talking about, I want to know how many reports are there of mercury?
So there's been, Dr. Steve Embley at U N C W has done a lot of work with mercury in the environment. And there's, there's naturally occurring mercury, but then there's the mercury that industry emits as a byproduct and ends up in the river. And that's the kind of mercury that, you know, they tell you, you know, if your wife is pregnant, don't, don't let her eat the fish. And, you know, if you have a small child, you know, don't, don't eat that, you know. So so yes, there is mercury in the river. It is higher than you would expect to see in a natural system where you would have some environmental mercury. When you're talking about the new dredging project, they're going deeper than they've gone before. So, you know, there's a little bit of overage, right? Like dredging isn't an exact science, you know, they they're, they get to a certain level. You know, maybe they've gone a little bit further down here than they should have, but, you know, they have overages. But it's, it's basically, you know, if you're going to go and make it, make it five feet deeper, just, just to, you know, it's different depths of different things, but we'll just say five feet deeper, that's five new feet of material that has not been stirred up for all that time. So being a scientist, we like to go out and look and see what the facts are. So, you know, you wouldn't really know until you did it. But like I said, based on the experience of having these other kind of natural disturbances, model it for us, like in the form of hurricanes, I'd expect to see more following dredging now. You know, fortunately, you know, down here on the lower part of the river, you've got a lot of flushing. You know, dilution's the solution to pollution. So you have the tide taking the water out a lot more rapidly than, you know, it does for the upriver. So you might have a greater problem, you know, well north of South Port. But but I would expect, I would expect it to be a problem. And it is, and Dr. Embley's done work down here for over 20 years. So it is a documented, it's a documented phenomenon.
Okay, so since the whole object of this, of this today is one, public awareness. And two, we have a timeline to report to two different agencies, Kama and D E Q. D E Q would be the mercury people. In your studies and stuff, have you talked to D E Q about this issue?
We've, we signed on to omnibus comments. So we wrote our own comments and we focused on birds and the comments that we submitted to the Corps. And we're going to submit very similar comments to the, to the state consistency process of Kama and D E Q. And well, those will include concerns about, you know, contaminants, you know, including mercury and including PFAS. So, so.
But you haven't, I don't mean to be disrespectful in my next statement. But right now you have not confirmed through them of your concern about the mercury. You're going to write comments that it could happen. But I'm in your camp, okay?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, yeah.
It could happen, but we haven't, the D E Q hasn't opined back to you that we're we're looking at that or anything.
No, we haven't had a conversation with anybody on staff about it. I've had conversations with D E Q about, as a private citizens, about the fact that my water is contaminated. My water from, comes from the Castle Hayne Aquifer through a private utility company. They told me it was very hard to measure in very small amounts and I shouldn't worry and keep drinking the water. And I got an R O filter, so, you know, it was, it was not great advice. But but as a, as Audubon, no, haven't had conversations with staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of this speaker? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your time, appreciate it.
Carrie, are you ready then?
Good morning. Thank you all for for having me and having all of us here for this conversation. I really think asking these questions is the best thing that we can do and just the responsibility that we owe to our communities. So my name is Carrie Allen. I work for the North Carolina Coastal Federation. Sure, many of y'all are familiar with us, but for those who aren't, we are a nonprofit organization that focuses on protecting and restoring the coast. We've worked with the city over the years on numerous different living shoreline and restoration and resiliency projects. And, you know, when it comes to issues like this, one of the the primary tenets of our beliefs is that every informed opinion matters when it comes to decisions that affect the coast because the coast belongs to us all. And I don't have formal comments prepared, but I do want to share a few key points and thoughts from our perspective and also address some of the really good questions that have been raised. And I think kind of at the root of it, one of the really good questions that kicked us off was, you know, what's the benefit? And what's the risk, right? When you're looking at something that has the potential for this kind of impact. And I don't want to get too much into the economics. Bill Carey will be speaking on that in a few. But as it stands, this is a $1.3 billion project to bring in the exact same amount of cargo that's coming in right now. And so when you, when you dig into that, you know, the the benefit really goes to the international shipping communities. That is not saving our our taxpayers who are footing the bill for this project any money. And it, you know, it is a cost share, federal and state, I believe 75% federal. That's still 25% that's coming from our North Carolina taxpayers.
That's like $330 million, I believe this is.
And, you know, for exactly, you know, what is that benefit? And so when you start to get into all of these different areas and look at really what is irrevocable risk and harm to our community that we are paying for what benefit, I I think is is an important way to phrase it. And, you know, I want to be careful. Over the years, you know, we've, we've followed these projects and we're not inherently opposed to poor expansion. We we recognize that they are an important economic driver in our community. However, it's it's very hard to justify. And looking at the draft E I S, the Corps really failed to offer a compelling justification for this project. As Lindsay mentioned, you know, we've been sitting in these scoping meetings for, you know, seven, eight years just for this project specifically. And we have been asking the Corps all of the same questions you've been asking today. We've been asking for alternatives, for different routes, for different ways to accomplish these things, for testing of heavy metals and more recently PFAS. We've been asking for monitoring. We've been asking for better science around the modeling and hydraulics of this project. And we haven't gotten good answers. And so, you know, I'm very inspired that y'all are here asking these questions. And, you know, to be frank, hoping that your weight might carry a little bit more when asking these questions of these agencies. And that's not to vilify them. I know that everyone is doing, you know, the best they can with the resources they have. But as, you know, you've heard today, as it stands, there's no monitoring involved in this project. After the last major dredging, there was robust monitoring for about 10 years. I was a grad student doing part of that monitoring on the river on cold rainy mornings back about 15 years ago. And it, you know, there was monitoring, that monitoring to be able to a lot of really beneficial information about our river, about these systems, about these fishery systems. You know, we're talking blue crab and shrimp, over 50 snapper grouper species, southern flounder, species that are really important to our community. And and this is sort of a, I'll teeter into the anecdotal a little bit, but on to the contaminant conversation. So, you know, we we have PFAS, we know our communities are exposed. We know our communities are exposed at higher than average levels on a national and global scale. As Lindsay said, the Corps is not planning to do any monitoring of this at all. We have the best researchers on this, on the planet here in the state of North Carolina. The director of the PFAS Testing Network is based out of U N C W. We have the resources to be able to do it. What we need is funding and someone compelling them to do that and then to act with that information. I personally am part of the PFAS blood study that Dr. Hoppin is doing at N C State. I'm, you know, from Wilmington, I grew up here. I've spent almost my entire life around the Lower Cape Fear and my levels are elevated. My levels are also very elevated of mercury. That's not something that's in a typical blood test. I, due to chronic illness, I'm working with another provider and my levels are very high. And she said, this provider, she said after moving to this area, she is shocked at the really high levels of mercury that are in almost all of her patients living in the Lower Cape Fear. This past year, she asked me to quit eating local seafood, which has been a major hardship. And my levels have dropped substantially. So just because we're not seeing it or hearing it doesn't mean it's not there. And, you know, I think, again, we need the science to go with that. We need the reports, we need the agencies and we have those resources. And so, you know, we need a robust monitoring plan. We need that adaptive mitigation plan. We need to know that whatever consequences come from this project, if it is passed, which it likely will occur, that we will be taken care of and that we can actually learn something from that. I think those are some of the the biggest, you know, takeaways from from our perspective. You know, some of the other things that have been brought up this morning is the impact to the currents. And as we're changing the currents and changing this water flow, we're also changing how much tidal flushing there is. And so we are further, you know, concentrating those contaminants because we don't have that naturally occurring tidal flushing that, you know, Mother Nature designs originally. You also just look at the, you know, the sheer volume of water when you're, you know, increasing the the tidal prism, when you're increasing the volume of water that's in that river, that is more water, that's going to be overflowing the riverbanks during storm events. We're already a community that suffers from nuisance flooding, sunny day flooding, not to mention the storm impacts that we have. And as we all know, storms are becoming more frequent and more severe. And so you look at that and it just, you know, it's, it's tough because it flies in the face of everything we're working towards, right? My organization, everyone in this room, we've all invested immense time, money, energy and resources into making our community more resilient. And all of this does is chip away at it. So I'm happy to answer questions. I think a lot of the high level takeaways have been addressed. But I am just really excited to see y'all asking these questions and, you know, encourage you to submit them to D C M and reach out to the Corps. The Corps initial comment period has passed, but they're still there. They still want to hear this information, especially from a municipality like yourselves. So reach out to them, have these conversations so that perhaps we can see some of these things addressed in the final E I S. And, you know, if this project does move forward and then, you know, pushing for that better monitoring and mitigation and adaptive management. But also, you know, I I think this this project's a little bit different because the benefit cost ratio is incredibly low. And I think, and again, I don't want to infringe on on Bill's discussion today, but I think the benefit cost ratio is around 1.3. Put that in comparison to other port projects like this that are over seven, you know, seven times the benefit for every dollar spent. It's already very low. And so if they do this project the right way, they include monitoring, that could very easily shift it to not be cost effective, in which case this project could very well not happen or happen at a much smaller scale. You know, working for a nonprofit, very attuned to picking your battles, you know, making sure that we're, we're working with the best information. We don't want to spend resources on something that is a lost cause, even though I am the patron saint of such lost causes or it feels like it some days. And so there is a chance. I also really encourage you to talk to your legislators, you know, again, 25%. And so there is a chance. I also really encourage you to talk to your legislators, you know, again, 25%. That 1.3 billion is going to be coming from North Carolina as well as, of course, our our federal legislators as well. The project is congressionally authorized, but it's not funded. And, you know, it seems like in a time when we're really trying to focus on increased government efficiency, this might not be the best example of it. So with that, I'd just love to answer any questions y'all might have.
Other questions for the speaker?
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
I I do have a question for you. You used the economic benefit of 1.3. Is that Bill Carey's number or is that the Corps' number?
That came from the draft EIS itself, from the Corps.
Okay. For those that are not familiar, Mr. Carey is the is the author, is he not? Or is he? Yeah, okay. He's Bald Head Island. So if you haven't read that document, it's it's quite spectacular.
They've really done an extraordinary job.
All right. Not having any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This manager?
Yeah, I'll just introduce Mr. Bill Carey. He's an attorney with Brooks Pierce out of Greensboro. Mr. Carey has worked extensively with public and private entities specializing in the areas of climate resilience planning and strategies. As has been mentioned, he helped Bald Head craft their economic statements and their responses to the Corps. He also has served as general counsel of the North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. So Mr. Carey is very experienced and educated in this area that we're speaking with. So Mr. Carey will turn it over to you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start with what my father taught me, which is never deny a favorable rumor. So I will proceed with my comments before I address specifically the economics, which I believe is what you asked me to address. I wanted to make some observations about the other comments that were made today. I don't take issue with any of them. I agree with them, but I want some points of clarification just so that the the council understands. Lindsay's comments, Lindsay mentioned the Benefit Use Plan. And she correctly pointed out, there is only one mitigation plan in this DEIS and it addresses wetlands and fish passages. The beneficial use of dredge material is not a mitigation plan. It is a plan where by the Corps will save costs in disposing of dredge material. The difference is important. Mitigation is an impact that the Corps is required to provide if a project has an impact. They don't have a choice about it. They have a choice about how to minimize their costs. So if they recognize something that's having an impact, they have an obligation to mitigate it. They don't recognize any impacts for this project other than those in Appendix M. And if you go on the on the ports website, you can see on the Corps' website, you can see all the appendixes. Appendix M is the mitigation plan and it only addresses the impacts of increased saltwater, the impacts on fish species, the impacts on the marshes. That's the only mitigation they recognize in this plan. And as as Lindsay and Carey both said, there's no monitoring. There's no other mitigation being provided. The the Corps, just as a factual background, the Corps did no sampling of any of the sediment that they're panning on dredging. They didn't do, they they didn't sample, so they don't know what's in it. The the other thing I want to point out is in your discussion of where the channel should go, you should remember that you were locked out of the discussion of alternatives. When the port did the 203 analysis, the feasibility study for this project, that was supposed to be a process open to the public and it was not. The only way to comment on what the ports, what was called a 203 study, was to submit comments to a website. They never activated that website. There was no way to submit. So the the port's plan was done exclusively by the port. You didn't have an opportunity to comment on the alternatives. And that is an error that should have been corrected by the Corps when it came back and they didn't. The process, and it's something that Bald Head has complained about, that this process from the beginning has been closed from the public and it should not have been. The on the erosion points, I want to to refer TI Coastal to the comments that were submitted by Orton and by Bald Head and their experts. They agree that the erosion impacts are going to be significant and that the wave analyses have been very deficient. There are a lot of technical criticisms in the fourth, technical reports out for both Orton and a separate one done for Bald Head about the technical deficiencies in the Corps' analysis. The Corps simply adopted studies previously done for the port and they used very antiquated and simplistic models that underestimate what the impacts are going to be. And now I want to talk a little bit about the economic impacts. The, as Carey said, the Corps, okay, initially the port estimated that the benefit cost ratio, the and the the BCR, I want to make sure everybody understands the same terms and I'm sorry if I'm going over stuff that's too basic, but it's important we all be on the same page. The Corps calculates the national economic benefit, not the benefit to Wilmington or the benefit to North Carolina, but the supposed national economic benefit of over the 50-year life of the project. They discount that benefit back to at a present value. That's the benefit. They then look at the cost of the project over the 50-year life. Most of those costs are on the front end in the construction, but they also look at the 50-year maintenance costs, the annual dredging, they discount those back to present value and they make a ratio, benefit to cost. It has to be one, one to one to be feasible, to be technically feasible. The Secretary of the Army is supposed to then recommend to Congress that this project is feasible if it passes that one-to-one test. One-to-one is unbelievably low. The port initially estimated that the benefit cost ratio was 5.4 to one. They then, the Corps criticized that study. The port redid it and came back at 2.5 to one. The Corps has now redone that study and the Corps has come back at 1.3 to one. That the Port of Savannah was 7.5 or 7.3, I forgot which, 7.3 to one. What is important about those ratios is if you're if you're a little bit wrong about the costs, if you're a little bit wrong about the benefits, it's not going to matter in terms of whether or not the project pays for itself. Here, it is going to matter. If you've guessed wrong, you've wasted money that never pays for itself. It's also critically important that they have omitted a lot of costs, most of which are on the front end. And that would change this ratio significantly. If they had to fund the impacts to Southport of of protecting your shorelines, protecting your infrastructure, your streets and sidewalks, if they had to put that cost in, that increases the cost. It drives down the BCR. If they had to look at the impacts to the Bird Islands, to the natural habitats, you're preparing comments for the CZMA. The CZMA is looking to areas of environmental concern. If they have to mitigate all the impacts to areas of environmental concern, which they haven't done in this, that is going to drive the cost of this project up and drive the and drive the BCR down. So those are some just fundamentals about the map. Now, let's step back and talk about a larger picture. Nobody has studied the benefit to North Carolina or Wilmington from this project. Nobody. The Corps didn't do it and the port really didn't. The port did it initially and the Corps rejected the analysis as unsustained and undocumented, which is why the Assistant Secretary of the Army ordered the Corps to re-study the feasibility because he rejected the port's study. So when the Corps studies the project, the Corps is only looking at a supposed national benefit. And that, and they assumed there would be no benefit to North Carolina or Wilmington. They assumed that there will be no increase in traffic. They didn't study it. And I'm sure you're going to, and the port, I've asked, I did a Freedom of Information Act and for the first time in this project, I did a public records request to the port that they responded to. They've never responded to any of the others. I said, I want to see the comments you submitted to the DEIS and the and the draft letter report. And they said, we didn't submit any. We didn't submit any comments. So we haven't heard what the port's response to these documents is yet. I think what they're going to say is, of course, there will be a huge benefit to the port if we're deeper and bigger, a lot more traffic is going to come. Nobody studied that. Nobody knows that. Our economist, whose report is attached to our comments, says that there is no reason to believe that will happen. That is, remember, this is a 50-year project and you're looking out 50 years of what maritime traffic is going to look like. Just because a bigger ship can come heavily laden tomorrow doesn't mean it's going to or it's going to keep coming to or that it makes financial sense for it to. He looks, for example, at the Port of Jacksonville, Florida. Jacksonville, Florida is very much like Wilmington. It is a smaller port, serving a smaller market, close to big ports, serving big markets. Jacksonville has a 47-foot harbor already. They are not seeing the kinds of traffic that Wilmington says they're going to see. What they're seeing is what our economist predicts will continue to happen in Wilmington, which is called hub-and-spoke or feeder-ing. It makes more economic sense as these ships get bigger and bigger for them to come to fewer ports, disperse their load to more efficient ships and send them to the smaller markets. Wilmington handles less than 1.5% of the containerized cargo on the whole East Coast. That's a, that's a tiny piece. It, there's no reason to believe that they're going to start acting like Savannah when that's the volume of cargo that they're handling. The forecast that that got to 1.3 is the most tortured economic forecast. Our expert, who's in his 80s and then a professor emeritus at the University of New Orleans and has done a lot of port projects, said it's the most tortured one I've ever seen. And it's, they did, they made a lot of assumptions that make no sense for Wilmington. One of the assumptions they made, every other port the Corps has studied, they forecast roughly 3.1% growth in imports per year on the East Coast because that's what historical trends are and that's what they're forecasting for all the ports. That's what they forecast for Wilmington until 2030. And from 2030 to 2036, they forecast 25.5% a year increase in imports. That is a huge growth. That, that, that's important because 2036 is the starting point for the 50 years of benefit that they're measuring. They have inflated the starting point by a factor of four by using 25.5% instead of 3%. We explain the math in our reports. There is no explanation in the economic documents that they've provided other than that's what the port told us. The port forecasted its increase in imports. It said these imports would happen because they are built, they and other industries in the area are building more portside facilities, landside facilities. That means, that logic means, go out and build yourself a big warehouse and if you do, lots of trucks will come to it. You'll have a lot of business. That doesn't make any sense to me. Imports come to North Carolina because there's a demand for the imports. And they come by ship because that's the most economic way to get there. If portside facilities are going to increase, that in itself is not going to increase the level of imports and there's no basis for it. They also made, they made other mathematical assumptions that are unsupportable, which we discussed in our arguments. One of them, and this is a very complicated argument to understand, but they assume a fleet of ships called PX-1s servicing Wilmington. When PX-1 stopped calling six years ago, they're not coming. And they're not going to come back. They're a ghost fleet. Nobody's using them. They're not efficient. This report uses them because by using them, they generate a larger benefit from the project because you use fewer of them or they can, they can come more fully loaded and that's more efficient for a PX-1. But it's less efficient than any other ship you could use. It makes, if you assume they don't use PX-1s, the 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 benefit cost ratio drops below one. If you, if you don't assume 25.5% growth for six years, the benefit cost ratio drops below 0.6. These are, challenging the economics of this program makes sense. And it makes sense to say to the politicians, what is the basis for saying there will be this huge, this huge benefit to North Carolina and to Wilmington? It's not in any of the studies that have been done. And if you look at how global trade is happening, it's not supported. The Corps study did not look, it did not consider the growth of the of hub, the hub process feeder-ing. It did not include that, even though 100% of the Asian imports coming to Wilmington currently are coming feeder-ed. The Corps assumed none of them would be. The Corps assumed four Asian consortiums would continue to service Wilmington. They're not. They're not serving them now. Only two of them were serving five years ago and none of them are serving now. So the assumptions the Corps has made to justify this this project don't exist. So I I think the those comments you're going to find don't directly address what DCM is addressing in the CZMA. I don't think that means you don't continue to say it to the politicians and you don't continue to say it to the Corps. We are including it in our CZMA comments because what we're telling DCM is it is important for you to be aggressive about the costs that they haven't addressed and that they need to address because in this project, it makes a difference. It, it can make a difference. Now, I want to correct one thing that was said earlier, which is that if the project impacts you, you can sue the Corps and they'll pay for it. That was not Bald Head's experience. When they stopped dredging in accordance with the with the sand management plan schedule, we sued them and we lost. And the court said that even though the the Corps, let me back up, in 2020, in 2000, the last DP project, DCM said this project is going to have a detrimental effect on the sand sharing system between Castle Beach and Bald Head Island across the mouth of the channel. That's a system that you need to understand because it impacts Southport as well. The sand shifts across that area. The channel cuts that sand sharing system in half and disrupts it. The, the DCM said, we are only going to concur with this project if you agree to do certain things, and gave them a list of things to do, including the sand sharing plan, excuse me, the sand management plan and to monitor that sand management plan and update it. The Corps said, we will agree to those conditions and the finding of those giving an impact said, we will comply with those conditions. When they didn't and we sued them, the court said, those promises are not binding on the Corps. They don't have to do them. So if you identify an impact, you have got to come up with something other than a Corps promise and other than annual maintenance. The annual maintenance dredging, for example, is discretionary. The Corps doesn't have to do it. You can't force them to do it. So you can't depend on the sand from annual dredging. You can't depend on beneficial use of dredge material for Bird Islands because the Corps doesn't have to do it. One of the things we're challenging the Division of Coastal Management to do is come up with an enforceable mechanism to make the Corps do what they've got to do, either pre-fund it in a trust fund or something like that or enter into a consent decree because if it's a consent decree, then a judge can make them do it. But it can't simply promise to do stuff. Another impact that I see to to Southport that is different from the last project that you need to address, you've heard a lot from your consultant correctly that the passage of these ships is going to continue to have an impact, the deepening of the harbor, probably going to give you less storm shelter than the than the prior. Uh, probably going to give you less storm shelter than the, than a, uh, the prior configuration did, moving it closer to you. You're going to have more storm damage. The last project, the core defined it as deepening the channel. And therefore, when ships came by and had impacts specifically at Brunswick Town and eroded historic Brunswick Town. The core refused to pay it out for it out of their pocket because they said, the ship's passing is not, not our problem. Uh, deepening the channel didn't hurt your, your, um, your project. This time around, they have recognized the fallacy of that and have defined the passage of bigger ships as part of the project. So the impact of the passage of these bigger ships, the wakes, uh, et cetera. Are project impacts and project impacts the core should be addressing. So when you identify threats to the town from the passage of these ships or from the exposure of the deeper channel to, to your infrastructure. Those are project impacts that should be identified as impacts that should be, uh, mitigated. And that funding should be, because that annual redredging is going to re exacerbate the problem every year. Uh, the mitigation that is needed can't be left to the discretionary, uh, operating and maintenance budget of the core on a future annual basis. It's got to be done, uh, in some way that is enforceable. Sorry, I have rambled around. Um, there is, and I've probably told you all more than you want to know about the subject, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there questions for the speaker?
Uh, I have one. Thank you for all the have told us, uh, Mr. Carey. What I'm, this is very discouraging, of course, uh, bad news on top of bad news. What is our best action plan? I mean, do you, let me rephrase that a little bit. Do you think we have even a prayer of stopping this project?
Yes.
How do we do that? What's our little South Port? What do we do beyond a resolution?
Um, okay, I, I, there are multiple fights on fronts on which to fight. And none of us should be doing this fight alone. Um, there are multiple entities being impacted. Um, the various entities, uh, the, the coastal federation, the Audubon, the village of Bald Head Island. You, um, Orton plantation, um, and more allies. We need a united front. Okay. I think, um, first of all, the, the immediate fight is with DCM and the Coastal Zone Management Act, uh, consistency. Uh, i- if they conclude that this is consistent. It is relatively easy to challenge that in the office of administrative hearings. File, file a complaint, the office of administrative hearings, that they have been arbitrary and capricious in concluding that the areas of environmental concern that this project is impacting have been adequately protected. Um, that multiple parties have an interest in that. Uh, there are multiple areas of AECs that have been impacted and that is, that is one challenge. Uh, I think it is increasingly difficult, um, to challenge environmental impact statements. The Supreme Court has made it very difficult to challenge, uh, the advocacy of an environmental impact statement. Uh, but that doesn't mean, uh, it's a complete waste of time. The, the if they have completely failed to analyze the system and we believe they have completely failed to analyze the sand sharing system at the mouth of the river, impacting multiple A, uh, AECs and multiple beaches. They can do a bad job, but they can't not do their job, uh, in doing an EIS. So that would be a basis to challenge the EIS. The reason to do that is to drive up the cost. Um, normally it's a waste of time to challenge an, an EIS because all they do is go back and do it right. And they still do the project. If you, if they do it right and it drives the project cost up to the point that it's no longer feasible, the project's dead. Um, they don't recog- they don't recommend it to Congress. Um, the, the other legal method forward is to challenge the draft letter report when it becomes a final letter report. To, to say the secretary of the army is abusing his discretion be, uh, in certifying this project as feasible. That certification is not entitled to the same kind of deference that an environmental impact statement is entitled to. It is like any other agency decision. If they got it wrong, it's arbitrary and capricious. And we say they got the economic analysis wrong and that the secretary of the army is incorrect in certifying to Congress that this project was developed in accordance with the rules of the, of the Corps of Engineers because it was not. Uh, they excluded the public from every meaningful step in this project and it should, it shouldn't have been certified. So a, a cha- a, uh, an administrative procedure act challenge of the final letter report would be appropriate. The other method, the other avenue is to revisit our legislators and ask them, a- a- and here there's a lot of headwinds and I recognize there are a lot of headwinds, but ask them, um, no one has, has challenged the port's assumption that there will be a huge benefit to North Carolina. Um, before the state of North Carolina spends $340 million, they ought to be sure they're getting something for it. And they ought to get that word from somebody who doesn't have a vested interest in telling them the answer. Um, the, the, the ports, uh, e- e- even the national economic benefit, which is all that the the draft letter report analyzes is a, a national benefit. Even that is, we think highly suspect. We think it's wrong. That's what our analysis is. And that entire economic benefit, by the way, flows exclusively to the shippers. All it is, is an increase in efficiency that the shippers using the port will recognize. So the entire economic benefit of the pro- of the project flows to the shipping companies. The poor, the core agrees with that. They don't, th- th- this is not Bill Carey making this up. Um, what the core will say is, and they, this is a quote, um, uh, we believe in capitalism. They say, we believe that if the shippers have, uh, more efficiencies, they will pass those efficiencies on to the marketplace and the national economy will benefit. I would say that I don't think that if you improve the efficiency of a sector of the economy that serves less than one and a half percent, that you're going to affect prices. Um, I think that's just going to be a windfall to the shippers. Uh, even if you assume their analysis is correct. And I think their analysis is highly suspect. Challenging this project on the, the financing basis is, is not a waste of time for another reason. And let me explain something else about the BCR. Um, the BCR that was calculated by the core was calculated using a present value discount rate of 3%. That's right. It'd be 3 and a half. I think it's 3%. Because that is the current mandated federal rate for this kind of evaluation. There is a non-binding core guidance that they have always used. That they don't recommend a project for funding. Uh, so, so I'm back up. Using 3%, if they're right that it's 1.3, they have to say it is technically feasible. They, to recommend it for funding, they use a 7% discount rate and they want a 2.5 BCR. A 7% discount rate kills this project. Because you're discounting to present values, benefits that are all way out there and costs that are all on the front end. So the costs don't get reduced very much and the benefits get cut more than in half. The project, uh, it can't, um, satisfy that standard. Uh, lots of projects around the country go begging that are way better than this project. Uh, so making economic arguments that this is a waste of federal money and it's a huge waste of state money. And you've got a lot on your side making that argument. What you've got going against it is a bunch of momentum of people that have sort of stuck their spear in the ground and said, I want this project. Um, political leaders who sponsored it and who've said they think it's important. But what I haven't seen is any justification for why it's important. And when you look at the, the national, the, the international trends in shipping, I mean, you now have ships that are, that are bigger than can go through the Panama Canal, uh, way bigger than will ever be able to come to Wilmington. And they are going to be, start dominating the world trade, uh, for a number of reasons. The economy in Asia is shifting to the southern part of, of A, of East Asia. It is more economical for those ships to get to the East Coast through the Suez Canal. They can come through the Suez Canal in ships that are way bigger than what can come through the Panama Canal. Those ships are going to come to major ports, offload and feeder. We're not going, we're not going to need a deeper port. Um, Savannah's, I mean, Tross is not going to need a deeper port. Jacksonville, Florida is not going to need a deeper port. Uh, so w- we shouldn't be spending money for a 50 year project. When the world has left us behind. It's like building roads for Model As. When you know Model As are only going to be around for another year. There are new cars coming. Um, so I don't, I don't think it's a waste of time. I think it's a multi, a, a multi-front challenge. It's a challenge to the certification of this project as feasible and it's a political challenge to the economic justification for this, for this port. The port, so that you're clear and you don't get blindsided. The port justified this project by saying there is currently cargo coming to the inner part of North Carolina by truck and rail from Norfolk and Charleston and Savannah. And that port, that cargo will come to Wilmington if the port's bigger and deeper. Um, the pore, the core simply didn't adopt that analysis. They just, eh, they didn't say it's wrong, but they, I think they tacitly said it's wrong because they didn't, th- they didn't address that at all. Um, and what our economist says is there are different reasons for cargo to offload in Savannah, Norfolk, Charleston, or come to Wilmington than simply the depth of the port. Uh, and the, the big ships are already coming, as, as Carey and Lindsay have already pointed out, they're going to keep coming. Um, will they be a little bit more efficient if the port is, i- i- if the harbor is deeper? Um, you know, yes, it could be, but we say that doesn't decide the issue. If you've got, um, you've had involvement with businesses. All of them worked on a just in time basis. They want their cargo picked up and they want their cargo delivered on a regular basis. They don't want to come in once a month because it's more, more efficient to bring it once a month. So if ships are going to have to call on Wilmington weekly to service those customers. The fact that you can now come less often in a bigger ship isn't going to change how the cargo gets here. That's part of what our, um, expert analyzed, that the core did not consider that. Um, the core, the other thing the core did is they said they, they based their service patterns on private conversations with shipping companies that they can't share with us because of NDAs. And we say, of course, those shipping companies said they'd rather have a deeper harbor. It gives them more flexibility. Then they can do whatever they want to do. Are they actually going to use it? Not necessarily, but, but we don't know that. I'm sorry, I'm rambling long.
Oh, well, thank you.
Any other question?
Well, yeah, I, I want to expand on my question, which is what is our action plan that would actually perhaps have an effect? This is a question to both, uh, Mr. Carey and to my fellow alderman.
I'll start by, by summarizing what I said. I think you get your comments into CZMA. I have not seen your comments that you sent to the core. I would like to see them if somebody would send them to me. Uh, if you have not commented on the economics of it, um, as Carey said, the comment period may be closed, but it doesn't matter. I'd send them in anyway, uh, and say, uh, that. So I think getting your comments in, um, and I think starting to uh, dis- discuss with potential allies, how to motivate the political system to be responsive to a critical look at this project. You don't have to say, we want you to change your mind. We can say, we want you to look, we want you to look critically at this project. Now I'll be quiet.
Thank you.
So low, blow, this is rich. We hadn't gotten to this part of the conversation between, for the board of aldermen, but clearly the, uh, re- resolution is not the end all and be all and is never meant to be. So the resolution is to really notify the public of our stance. The, and Karen, please correct me if I go off the trail, right, I was here. The second part of this would be, we take all this information and we have the manager put this into a document in the next week or so, um, to have a reply to comma and DEQ. Now, I'm hoping somebody will help me with this part of it. I look at comma and DEQ as being more environmental than economic. Am I, am I wrong on that or am I right on that? So the economic issue that's been brought up time and time again, has won, some of that has already gone into the core. Whether or not they'll even accept anything else back from us is another issue. But the document that we're looking at right now is the, the issue that comma and DEQ have jurisdiction over. Because that's where we are. Um, and we can then circle back and discuss whether or not we put a second document into the core, whether or not they'll even accept that. But I, I, I do have a couple of questions for you, sir, and that is, I I, I have worked with the core on a number of different objects and projects, I should say. And while I may disagree with them, I have not found them to be, to do, to make decisions based on, I just don't like you. Um, so when they do not do a dredging project that they thought they could do. All of those reasons, as far as I know, has to do with the federal legislators not giving them the money to do it. Time and time again, when we ask them about something, it is, we can't do it because nobody gave us any money to do it, whether we want to do it or not. Is that a fair statement?
I think it is. I, I think it is. And I think from, from the consultants I've talked to, particularly my, our port economic consultant. What he says is, the core does not think they're in the business of telling somebody they can't have a project, which is what he thinks they did in this project. They tried to find a way to economically justify it because if they didn't, they would be saying Wilmington, you can't have your project. And they didn't see that was their, I mean, if, if they had come in and done this project analysis the same way they did Savannah, it would flunk. It would not be feasible and the secretary of the army would have to say it's not feasible. And the core found a way to get the one, the BCR above 1.0. Cause I think the core thinks that's their business, but I think you're right. They're not in the business for advocating for or against a project. They're, they're trying to keep the doors open and let the politicians make the decision about where they want to keep, spend their money.
So my next question is, when we're talking about economic benefit and whether or not Wilmington would benefit from the deepening of the port for any other reason other than it's a deep, deeper channel. I, I'm assuming, but I, I, I'm, that's a bad thing for me to do because I'm assuming something. I'm assuming that part of there, there being the port, the ports authority, uh, analysis had to do with the establishment of a railroad line directly to the port. And that right now, there's, I, I can't remember the number, 40 gazillion trucks a day, a year leave Wilmington and have to truck everything everywhere. Now there is on the planning board, uh, a, a dedicated rail service that would go straight out towards Wilson and then probably to Raleigh, but once you get to Wilson, you can go north and south on the, on the other train lines. And that's going to take some astronomical 40,000, 50,000 trucks a year off the road. It's going to make it much cheaper to do that. So when we're talking about the economics and I'm, I'm in your court that our only chance of potentially having the project be deferred or dis- so what, done away with is the economics. We have to be forthright in our numbers and how we're looking at this. And I think that economic issue is in their court and I'm not, I've not heard anybody actually talk about. This is probably tied to that rail line. And this is not like a wish line. This is, they, they know where the line is going to be. They already know. This is, they, they know where the line is gonna be, they already know what dirt they have to have and all of that stuff. It's, it's beyond just theoretical. Did you include that as part of your analysis of whether or not it, the two projects tied together would make Wilmington more attractive?
I did not, because as, as I said, wha- what I have not seen is an, an independent analysis of what's going to happen in Wilmington. So the, the, the assumption that a rail line, yes, it will make it more efficient, easier to get interior, to the interior. Does that mean that the commerce into Wilmington by ship will change in a way that is affected by whether or not the project happens? So, and what our economists, or what our maritime economist says is, no. Look at, look at Jacksonville, uh, Florida, they have a deep harbor. The fact that bigger ships can come in there isn't affecting which ships come. Which ships come are de- are determined by service needs, frequency of call. So, eh, as he points out.
But all of that, sir, is tied to, to the bigger picture to this. There's a much bigger picture than this, a channel. I don't know Jacksonville, okay, I know where it is, but, but I don't know whether or not they have a dedicated rail line service that would assist them. Are they stuck where Wilmington is on using trucks to do everything? So.
I don't, I don't know.
So the, these are the, these are some of the, the meaty things that we have to get down to, because if you're gonna go and, and, and we're gonna talk about this, we have to have all the facts in front of us, and what does that mean? Again, I'm in your court as far as how do we, how do we work on this? The mitigation and the monitoring, is that gonna be? I, 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 I think I thought, thought a $40 million a year, something like that. Because you gotta get rid of that point three somehow, right? We gotta get it, actually, we gotta get to the, we gotta reduce it by the efficiency or the, the benefit by point four. At least point four. I don't know what that number is, but if, if monitoring is only a couple of million dollars, that's, we're not gonna get to point four. If, uh, the mitigation, so, so how do we get to, to the point four as opposed to just throwing wants and wishes out?
Well, okay, the, the economic analysis that our consultant did knocks it down below point six just by saying, do the math in a rational way and you get to point six. You, you, you don't, um, you don't have to, um, make any of the kind of assumptions I'm making. He's just saying, eh, eh, for example, if you're doing a forecast and you have five years of data, you don't pick the highest of those five years and say, that's gonna be my starting point. You look at either a trend line or you look at an average, and the Corps says, that's what you do, and then they didn't do it. They picked.
Okay, that's, that, that, those are the things that.
So, so those are the kinds of things that we did, yeah.
Those are the things that we have to put down on one single piece of paper for all of us to look at to figure out how do we get to point four. Now, if you get below point four, so much so better, but at least that. And when we have these discussions, because I, I'm used to having somebody counter the issue and then hit me with some fact that I'd never included into my, my thought process. So this is important.
Okay, I can give you a couple. I can give you, I can give you a couple, right off the bat. The Corps assumes that four Asian services will continue to, not to come to Wilmington. They, they are not currently coming to Wilmington, and if only half of them come back, the BCR drops to point six. Okay, that's, that's one. Number, that's one example. Number two is, the Corps does not assume there's gonna be any feeder in Wilmington. Currently, 100% of what's coming into Wilmington from Asia is being feeder. If only 50% of that comes back, it drops to point six. They assume the future fleet will be these PX-1s, which have gone out of use everywhere else. If you assume that, it drops to either point seven five or point nine four, depending on some other assumption you make. If you change the forecasting to a reasonable set of base numbers and don't stick in 25% a year for five years unexplained, it drops to point five. So those are, a- and those are all taken individually. What he says is mathematically, those are all independent variables. You can combine them, and if you combine them, you get it down to point three, point two. You don't have to make assumptions about the ra- the impact of the rail line or these other things. You're looking at the national economic benefit, it goes away. Now.
You, you've answered my question, sir.
Okay, but as to this, I want to address one other thing, as to the state economic benefit and the, and the impact of the rail line, et cetera. What I would say, Southport and Ballhead and all the others should be saying is, State of North Carolina, please study that in a, in a, a comprehensive and open way that people can comment on instead of just taking the port's word for it, which is what we're currently doing. Have somebody lay out an analysis that says, here is how the rail line is going to impact cargo uh, through the port of Wilmington and impact the bene- the economy of North Carolina. Put that out.
I, 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 sir, I. I agree with you, and what I did not put into my co- my comment is, is that the rail line is not funded. So.
Right.
It's a, it's a conceptual idea where they have, they know where the path is, but the, the state of North Carolina would have to come up with a whole bunch more money to be able to make both of those pieces work. So that's part of the discussion. I, I thank you for summarizing those other comments. I, I'm gonna ask the manager to please take note of that and figure out if that fits into our document or not, uh, but I appreciate that. Is, are there other comments from the board? Go ahead.
Mr. Kerry, uh, one, one aspect of this whole scheme has been left out of this is we've got the largest military ocean terminal on this river. What's the, what's the need of the military terminal on this dredging? Because you can't figure an economic benefit, shipping, hold, excuse me. You can't figure the economic benefit of shipping a military bomb out in those waters. There's no economic, you can't figure out what the economic benefit of that is. Is the military asking for this? Because I keep hearing you talk about the Secretary of Army, Secretary of Army, just is that Army Corps of Engineer, or is this Matsu that's in this ballgame and we're not talking about national security?
No, the Matsu's not in this, in this game. Uh, one of the thing, our firm consults with, um, SURAS, which I don't know if y'all are familiar with, Southeast Regional Partnership for Planning and Sustainability, a partnership between the Department of Defense and conservation organizations. And we know very much with military's interest and not interest in them. Matsu doesn't care how deep the river is, in part, in large part, because Matsu ships to a lot of ports all over the world that are not deep water. Therefore, they don't need deep water vessels coming in and out of Matsu because they're going to ports that aren't deep water. So they're fine with the depth as it is. What Matsu has experienced is a, uh, is damage from the last project. They've got the same erosion problems along their shoreline that Brunswick Town immediately to the north of it has. And they are probably going to have, uh, additional need for more living shorelines or vetements or something uh, to address the erosion, uh, passing along r- right in front of Matsu. So they're not, eh, to my knowledge, they're not pushing for it, they've never said they're pushing forward, and it makes no sense for them to be pushing for it. They don't need a deeper port.
But we don't know whether or not they've actually been engaged in any of this, do we?
Uh, we don't, we can make a Freedom of Information Act request, but they didn't comment before. I would be very surprised.
We can just, we can just call the base commander, that's pretty simple, rather than go through that. We deal with them. Any other questions, Frank? Go ahead.
Just a comment. If you bring, somebody's making the assumption, if you bring in these, uh, larger ships, it's gonna be more uh, business for the port of Wilmington. Uh, about the only real economic benefit, it's gonna take you, the cost of unloading a container is gonna be the same, regardless if it's coming in on 1,000-foot ship or 1,200-foot ship. The only difference there would be the amount of time you'd have to turn the boat around. Now, if you're taking it and you're loading it onto a railcar, then I don't know what the cost would be as compared to loading it onto a truck, but you load it onto a railcar, you're gonna have a lot less trucks, therefore you're gonna put a lot of truckers out of business. So somebody needs to do a break-even analysis there. You know, what are the economic advantages and disadvantages of having to do all that?
There, I would say, you have also heard some, I, I've also heard some folks in Wilmington, politically speaking of, if you don't get that shift to rail, you have a huge burden on the infrastructure in Wilmington. If, if the port is right and there's a big surge in activity, what are you gonna do for roads and bridges in Wilmington? Uh, they're already overtaxed, um, and so, and fixing any of that is extremely expensive, and none of that has been factored in.
I have one more question. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Lo again. Who is for this? I mean, what municipalities, counties, entities are pushing for it?
Are you asking Mr. Kerry or are you asking us?
I, I don't know. I, 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 I have not seen co- comments. I don't know if Wilmington has spoken up one way or the other. Wilmington has got challenges either way. They're gonna see increased tidal influence, which is gonna give them King Tide problems, it's gonna give them saltwater intrusion problems, um, and it's gonna give them infrastructure problems. So I, I haven't seen them speak out one way or the other, and I don't know anybody else along the way that has, that has spoken up for it. I think business interests, I, I think business interests have said, um, they believe that it's important, um, for, for their business because the port has told them it's important for their business. I don't think they have an independent basis for coming to that conclusion.
Thank you.
The only organization I'm familiar with who has publicly supported it outside of the Ports Authority is the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. Um, outside of there, any municipalities or organizations, maybe they're taking a stance of opposition or neutrality.
Before you sit down? I don't think you, you may not know the answer, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. Somebody had to talk to somebody in Raleigh if they thought they were gonna get $339 million to do this. So we don't know at the state, I'm, I'm assuming, we do not know at the state level who's behind this.
We, we do not. Some of the conversations we had with legislators when this project first came about and we were reviewing the 203 study, those legislators are no longer, um, in the General Assembly. And so that's one thing also I wanted to mention is that we've had kind of an informal coalition of partners these last few years, and we are formalizing that coalition, and so if there is someone from the town that would like to interface with us, we're putting a lot of focus right now on strategizing who to speak with, specifically focusing on our legislators, and who is the best messenger, and you know, what is the best, um, narrative there. So if there is something, uh, someone from the town that would be a good point person, we would very much appreciate that. And also, uh, I wanted to mention that we have a repository of information online. We have a website, nccoast.org-port, and we have, um, just a list of all of the different fact sheets, talking points, comment letters, any, um, of your documents or comment letters, we'd be happy to post on there, and we're just using that as a source of information for folks. Um, but that is kind of our next charge is to really drill down on those legislative conversations, figure out who this benefits, um, if anyone, as we've all established today, and figure out how to have those conversations in a productive and streamlined manner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Quite concise. Thank you.
I believe this, this, the, the state has already appropriated $280 million and put it aside for this project. And, uh, that goes back several years, I believe. Well, I'm not gonna name names, but, uh, uh, so I believe there have been a number of folks in the legislature who have been vocal about supporting this project that dates back to the port saying in 2019, you have to remember, they originally said, without this project, we're gonna close. That we, we won't be economically viable and we'll have to close. And I think the port, the, the state's response in, in appropriating $280 million and putting it aside was a response to that. We've got $280 million to spend, we're kinda trying to decide if that's the best way to spend it.
Any other comments or questions to the speaker?
Just wanna thank you, sir, for joining us today.
Thank you for the opportunity, and if there, if the meeting is gonna continue and you want me to stay, I will, otherwise I will sign off.
No, I, I, I don't think, I think we've got all our questions, and I, I'm pretty sure we're gonna probably circle back with you for a couple of refinements. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that, please.
Well, the next speaker is Dr. Sheets, and I think he left, sir, did he? Okay, so why, why, why was Dr. Sheets even on the agenda? That's because of the 4,000 original linear feet of the shoreline stabilization program. I believe it's 10, is it 10? 10 landowners have decided that they were going to do the shoreline project themselves, and they're paying it out of their own pocket. Uh, I believe most of that has to do with living shoreline, for most of it. And I wanted to offer those, those 10 people that are putting up a lot of money, uh, to have the opportunity to speak here, but unfortunately, Dr. Sheets had to leave, but that's the reason why he was here. But he has, eh, he has expressed to me the same issues that we have all expressed to each other, so and we're not in conflict with anything. He's, he's, eh, he's concerned about the slope, he's concerned about the waves on, on the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're going to have to spend to do their part of the project and it being damaged, and then there's no money for, uh, fixing it. So with that, uh, I think, Alderman Mosseller.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to kind of summarize what you believe might be the next steps here?
Uh, sure, I'd be glad to do that. Well, uh, obviously, um, Mr. Kerry gave us some good marching orders that we can add to our conversation, and I, I think we can use this, uh, tape to map out a lot of our comments and a lot of direction that we need to go in. I would say that. I, uh, did, uh, with some help, uh, put together a resolution I would like us to consider today. The, the reason, as, uh, Rich said, the reason for the, um, resolution is to give us something to give people to start as a conversation starter, not as a conversation ending. And, um, I think that it's in imperative that we reach out to all of our sister municipalities that are gonna uh, deal with the same conversation around mitigation. Uh, the, uh, as you looked at the, uh, um, uh, resolution, it, it focuses on mitigation and the issues and eh, uh, related to that for us and our environment. Our, our core values, our community core values are to protect the environment around us, and that includes Battery Island. When we did the 2050 Comprehensive Plan that we just adopted, uh, the two highest priorities, uh, with public input for the next 10 to 20 years was protection of marshes, wetlands, shorelands, shorelines, and environmentally sensitive areas, and water quality and creeks, rivers, and estuaries. So, um, I think, um, that's very appropriate, the resolution is, but just like I said, as a beginning point. And reaching out to our communities, asking our citizens to, who do you know? Let's go to our federal and state legislators ourselves and talk with them, craft us, uh, uh, an, a conversation that we want to put forth with them. I think that's a, a, a very needed and necessary thing, as well as comments, we would be expecting staff to prepare for DEQ. So, um, that's what I would say, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay, to, to adopt this resolution.
Obviously, that's okay. So just as a point of reference, there was a, a, uh, copy of this put on the website a couple of days ago, but there's been an additional paragraph added to it. Do you wanna read the one, the one? Do you want to read the one, the one paragraph that's?
Well, it's, you can or I can, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
Okay, this, paragraph three, we added, we did make a couple of changes. And we only did it yesterday. I don't know that it's gone out to the public yet. I'm not sure about that, the resolution, because I think we only got it yesterday. But, so, huh? Oh, oh, okay, well, never mind then. Okay, then the, a couple of updates are in paragraph three. Our engineering staff helped us with this. Whereas these alternatives have the potential to increase erosion risk to sensitive shorelines, marsh platforms, and riverfront areas, and increase the likelihood of subsidence, subsidence of adjacent riverbed and shoreline areas into the dredge prism, particularly within, and adjacent to the city of Southport, threatening natural buffers that protect homes, public spaces, cultural resources, and community infrastructure. We also made a slight change in paragraph five to read. Whereas Battery Island in particular is recognized as one of the most significant, significant colonial water bird nesting sites on the East Coast. And in total, all bird nesting islands on the Lower Cape Fear River provide habitat for approximately thirty percent of North Carolina's nesting coastal water bird population and are highly vulnerable to erosion, sea level rise, and habitat loss that may be exacerbated by channel deepening activities.
And I had a selfish reason for having you read that.
Because of that word.
Because of that word.
That was the engineer's word.
Yes. So there, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to the motion? Is a motion and a second, is there any conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Any opposed? God, passes unanimously. I, I, I would like to enter, entertain a motion, if the Board feels fit to do so, is to direct the manager to take the motion, take the information from today, and move forward with a document that we would be sending potentially, well, be sending to comma and DEQ for this particular December twentieth thing. But if, if there's a spinoff document that needs to go back to the Corps to enhance our original conversation, I leave that to the discretion of the manager to do that.
I would, I would make such a motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? Not hearing any, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I, I want to thank you, everybody that came here to speak. Terrific, appreciate that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody.